New Windsor work session for June 21st, 2022. First agenda item is approval of minutes that Dana has shared with everyone from the May 16th, 2022 work session. Do I hear any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the May 16th, 2022 work session meeting. All those in favor saying by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, so carry.
I'm gonna close this because I feel like I'm in shadow.
All right. Dealmen Inn sidewalk type. I know this has been an issue that Gary wanted to have addressed as soon as possible, and I think everybody saw his report with the discussion that he had in there. I talked to Jeff Childs, who's overseeing the project at Dealmen Inn with Lewis Contractors today, and my position on this is that we just do concrete sidewalk at this time for a couple of reasons. One, it would give us the town council another probably two years to look at different types of sidewalks, make a decision due to the fact that the sidewalk will probably be torn up in two years with streetscape. So I cannot see putting in additional expense into the sidewalk at this time when it very possibly could be torn up in two years. Now Jeff also did say to keep the water, if you look at the location up there, it, the sidewalk sits down lower than High Street, and of course, rainwater runs downhill. So in order to prevent that from doing any damage, he would like to put a little swoop, little drainage type into the sidewalk next to the building to get it away from the building. That's my point. He did send, I can probably share, there's a link that he sent this afternoon, and there are some sidewalk options that look like, they're stamped, that look exactly like brick. Probably everybody's seen them, and there's different shades, of course, whatever you want, but my opinion right now is that we just do a concrete sidewalk and wait until streetscape because they're gonna come in and probably
Tear it up.
Tear it up anyway, so.
They would only be tearing up the sidewalk along High Street though, not down Main Street.
Well, originally they were supposed to do the entire brick. Now whether or not that's been taken out, I don't know, but originally they were supposed to do all the sidewalks so that it matched.
Yeah, but is, if I understand Dave's question is the side, like as you turn the corner and start going down Main, that sidewalk?
Correct.
We're not doing anything with that at all, we're just leaving it the way it is?
Like I said, originally, at one time-
So if it was getting touched, they would go-
They were gonna take care of both sides-
Okay.
-with the sidewalk.
Okay. Well, when you say they, who, I mean, they being streetscape, or they-
State highway.
State highway, and you're saying that now they're not gonna take care of Church, of Main Street side?
No, I'm saying at one time, I haven't looked at the plans lately, they may have cut it out, I don't know, but originally, they were gonna do all the sidewalk around Dealmen Inn, all the brick sidewalk.
And right now, all they're doing is the side on High Street?
I don't know.
Okay, well, here's my other question. Are we absolutely positive that we're getting the streetscape? Because we've been here 30 years talking about the streetscape and we haven't gotten it, so I'm thinking if we have a chance to do something now, that's, who's paying for it?
What's that?
Who's paying for the sidewalk right now that we're getting?
It'll come out of the grant.
It'll come out of the grant. Well, I just kind of feel like we've waited a long time, let's, let's do what we can, and if it gets torn up and then redone, that's fine, but there's a good chance maybe it won't. I mean, there's so many things that haven't come to fruition that I personally feel like this is a chance for us to do something that would be kind of nice and have it a little bit more decorative. I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying, you know, I wonder how sure we are that the streetscape is gonna happen, because due to the meetings we've had, they've been reluctant to say they're gonna do a whole lot, you know, so.
When you guys met with them, Dave, you were there, they basically told you that all they were doing was the sidewalks, correct?
They had earmarked $2 million for sidewalks for the time of New Windsor, right? So sidewalks were, were going to be done-
Concrete side.
Concrete sidewalks.
ADA accessible concrete sidewalk.
Right, which according to old plans were five foot wide sidewalks throughout, throughout time. Now they did not, when we walked it, did not walk down Main Street in front of the Dealmen Inn. We only looked at up High Street and Main Street down to, and I talked about sidewalks down to 711, you know, that whole way that, but we did not talk about doing anything in front of, and, you know, we don't know, right? Again, we don't know.
So one, one thing I will, two things that I'll add is, first, I do see a benefit to the concrete in the sense of if the state highway is going to put in, I don't think they'll be putting in bricks, I think they'll be putting in sidewalk, and I think it'll be even tough for them to do the stamped concrete the whole way. I think if anything, they're going to end up putting just straight concrete, and then it would look weird having stamped concrete in front of the Dealmen Inn, but then all around it, regular concrete.
Right.
And then the second thing, I know Wayne's on, but I, I talked to Wayne and Gary. There is benefits to the concrete, either concrete or stamped concrete, because of the amount of backfill that they need, is less with the concrete, and the concrete, because it's tougher than bricks, it will help stabilize the foundation of the Dealmen Inn even more as well, so. I don't know if, like, to Sharon, to your point, were you talking about brick pavers or stamped concrete?
I'm talking about stamped concrete.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause there's benefits to concrete now, with the data, regular concrete versus stamped concrete, that's another discussion.
Oh, I understand, but, you know, I've been to, like, I saw, I went through Union Bridge every day when they were redoing Union Bridge, and they did a really nice job there, and I was up there not long ago, and it looks good, and it's been at least 10 years since they've done that, and it looks great, and they did, they had concrete with stamped concrete on the side that was a different color, it was tinted concrete. I mean, I just think that that's pretty minimal, and it still gives it a little bit more finesse, and, you know, I just, I just wonder whether they'll really come through and do something or not, you know, 'cause we've had, these, this town's had these discussions before and things have not happened, so we've been talking about streetscape for 30 years.
I know that Neil, Mayor Rupp has reached out to our delegation and, you know, and they, I was in conversation with the two after the meeting that you all had, and I don't, I'm guessing you haven't heard anything back.
Not yet, but, but the big picture is the federal government's gonna be giving all states infrastructure money for roads and bridges, and if I can't do my job as mayor to get more money for state highway administration, then, you know, I'm gonna be very disappointed myself, but I just feel, look at the money that has come down for infrastructure already to the town.
True.
And there's more money coming, and I just feel that the state highway, and, you know, I know I need to meet with the folks again. They, they gave us assurances at one time, and of course, things change, but they were gonna do all the, all the sidewalk from the alley on around with the bricks, and they will put in whatever we ask them to put in, you know, that was gonna be bricks, there was a couple of other places that wanted bricks, and they were willing to do that, I didn't agree to a couple of other places, but, you know, it's probably, you know, why should we get bricks at Dealmen Inn, but I think that is, has a historical factor where some of the houses don't. So, you know, that was my opinion, to have, have it more, the ambiance if nothing else.
Plus it's like the main corner in town and everything, you know, so.
Right, so.
There's a lot of arguments.
So the, the main street side of Dealmen Inn is about 10 foot, eight foot?
Probably more than that.
More than that?
Probably 20 foot.
From, from the road to the, the building?
Not 20.
From the end of the Dealmen Inn?
No, 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 no.
I think you're talking different-
From the building out to, out to the street.
Yeah.
It's like 10 foot.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, give or take.
So they're going to do that whole-
Well, more, I would think they would do five foot, but I don't know what, what they're gonna do, right?
I mean, if they are going to go in there and cement that, lay down a slab, I think that's going to look horrible, okay? Right, right now, if they go and, you know, even if it's just for two years, it's going to look horrible, it's going to look like people are gonna wanna pull their car up there and park on it, because it's gonna look like a parking pad. So I think if we have money in the, the grant available that's not going to be used for other parts of the project, I think we oughta go with the stamped concrete now and see where the chips lay as, as streetscape comes along. It's not costing us out of our pocket, it's costing us out of the grant money, and if it's not going to be totally used, I don't see the, the hurt in, in doing that, because I do think that, you know, okay, along the side, it's only a couple feet, it wouldn't matter, but that front section, if we cement all that in front of that building all the way down, I, I think that's, it's going to look horrible, even for two years, I think we just oughta do the stamped concrete.
Would they-
I agree totally.
Can, can I say something?
Sure.
So it's my understanding that there won't be the whole entire width of Main Street side.
But the, the main thing is, we should, in the essence of time, try to make a decision because the county's requiring us to put drain tile in around the building, and we need to figure out where the final grade's gonna be and set the, the depth of the base for the sidewalk. So this, the, the brick pavers requires a, a deeper base versus concrete, but Mayor Rupp is right, there's the potential that the state might come in and rip out whatever we put back in. I guess, to me, I'm looking at it as, our main focus right now is to stabilize and deflect the water. So I think the additional cost of the stamped concrete, I think it was $6,000 or something, if I remember correctly, but it would, it would definitely be your guys' call, but I think looking at the bigger picture here, you know, we need to get the water away from the building and get everything sealed up.
There was a stamped concrete option, is that, is that doable and get the water away from the building? I'm not, I'm not in favor of pavers just 'cause they move and everything and you get weeds in between them, but I like the idea of the stamped concrete.
Yeah, that, that's definitely-
It's a little bit more costly to do that aesthetically, it would look better, it would make the building and the walkways look a little bit more period correct, but then you're rolling the dice, basically, that the state highway might change the grade of the sidewalk, they might change the grade of the road, all the hard work that we've put into it, they might actually rip that back up. Now, if they're willing to replace what they rip up, you know, with stamped concrete, then I, I really don't see an issue with that, and depending on how long it takes before the streetscape project happens, it might look better to have the stamped concrete. However, you know, we, we have to first do the waterline project and get that completed, and then have the talks with the state highway to figure out, you know, which direction to head. But I would, I would envision that there's that whole section of sidewalk that goes from the corner of Main Street all the way to Town Hall on the Dealmen Inn property itself, I would envision that ultimately, we would replace that entire section with, you know, the stamped concrete to make it period correct, or, you know, dress that up a little bit because it's such a nice building, but, you know, that would, that would be, be your guys' call on that, but I, I do agree with Mayor Rupp that, you know, we should probably consider all options, however, getting the building sealed and the water away from the building is really the ultimate goal here in the beginning.
Concrete option that also allows us to get the water away from the building, I think that would be ideal, and just from an economic development standpoint, Mayor Rupp has done a really good job getting a lot of money for this building over the years that we've owned it, and it's gonna be a lot more sellable with all this work done, but also if it's attractive, I mean, it looks beautiful with the paint, but I think that Councilman Hoffman is right, if it has this awful concrete sidewalk in front of it, I, I just think that takes away from how it looks, so, you know, I just think for selling purposes, I, I, I don't, I'm not as negative about streetscape as I probably should be. I think it is gonna happen, and I think the time is right with, with leadership and money out there, so I think that we can be optimistic about that, so, but I think, I think, but I also think it could be several years, and I don't really like the idea of looking at plain concrete in front of that for, you know, I'm not thinking two years, I'm thinking probably longer than that before we're gonna have anything done. I mean, we see how long it takes another town.
Councilwoman Schultz, I agree with you, and one other, one other thing is, if ultimately we're trying to ma, you know, beautify Dealmen Inn to a point where it is sellable, if we, my point is if we go to the stamped concrete now, it makes the pro- sorry, it makes the product look, you know, more presentable and more, you know, sellable, I guess, that's not the right word, but I guess you know the point.
Developable or something.
Yeah, so.
Well, I like what Wayne said, period correct.
Period correct, but I mean, in the short term, because then you can, you know, with the stamped concrete, it looks like a, at least in that area, will look like the, a finished product ready for businesses to move in, whereas it may be a little bit of a deterrent with just plain concrete. I thought in our last meeting, we moved away from the brick just for the point that you brought up, Councilwoman Schultz, about the, you know, the settling of the brick and the maintenance down the, you know, in the long run, so I guess the question is, do we wanna spend the delta for stamped concrete, you know, versus just plain concrete? And I certainly understand the mayor's point of, you know, with the time, you know, just for the time being, they may come in and rip it up, but maybe we can negotiate that, that hey, let's, this is what we have here, and whatever you rip up, we can please put back, you know, that's what we'd like you to do, so.
Any other comments? The one question I would have is whether or not the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development will allow us to spend that money if it's gonna be torn up in two years. That would be my, my question.
I guess we'd have to find out, 'cause we don't, we don't really know when it, when a rift's gonna get torn up.
Right.
But yeah, I guess we have to find that out.
I, I don't, I don't even know if that's part of the conversation at this point, you know?
I know Gary was looking for a motion one way or another, so I'm seeing how worried the-
Was, was his, was he looking for a motion to decide between brick or concrete?
Brick or concrete, and then also concrete and stamped concrete.
So I would think, can't we?
One of the three.
Yeah, well, I think-
You could say we have a little bit of time if we needed to, like, decide on, 'cause they have the dye bags-
Right, right.
-do a light with just one dye bag, or you could do a darker shade with two dye bags.
Yeah.
He said we have a little bit of time with that, but he really needs a decision.
Yeah, certainly the stamped concrete's gonna take, it, that's gonna be more of a, an effort, because we've got multiple factors that need to be decided on. And again, do we have lineal footage of concrete that we're thinking about, Wayne? Is it, we're not gonna wrap the corner on to?
Could be replacing time, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's the face of the building, like, on the High Street side-
Corner of the Dealmen to Main Street, and then also the section from Main Street to where the little overhang porch roof is, so that would all be new concrete. The plan is to put the, the drain tile that's requested by the county around the exterior part of the building, set, set the grade appropriately according to the material we're gonna use. Regardless of whether we go with regular concrete or stamped concrete, you know, the base and the thickness of the concrete's gonna remain the same. So it sounds like you guys are leaning towards concrete, so we can let the contractor know they can set the base and everything in, in the way that it has to be set, and then I guess the next step would be providing samples to the council for approval as far as color and the mixture, whether it be one bag or, or two bag like Councilman Hall spoke about, and then trying to make a decision by the next council meeting, so we can button that side of the building up and move to the second phase essentially, because I think, I think we're ahead of schedule right now with the exception of a couple issues that they encountered, but we definitely wanna keep it on track because right now, we're vulnerable, you know, we have an open ditch line and an old foundation, and even though we've sealed it and insulated it and waterproofed it, it, there's still water retainage there, so we definitely wanna get the foundation sealed up and get the water deflected from the edge of the building. So I guess we, I guess maybe somebody should make a motion to approve, you know, what type of material we're gonna use, so we can proceed.
Looks like everybody's decided on stamped. Do you wanna go with the one bag for $62.55, $6,255, or two bags, which gives you a deeper, richer final color for $7,455, $10, that's the additional price.
Wayne, have you seen anything that's a sample of the color?
I haven't.
To reach out to his contractor and supply us with a sample, he wasn't able to get anything to do that, so I think he was gonna try to get us some pictures, so that's, that's the delay there, but I haven't had a chance to talk with him today, and we were all-
Contractors were not able to give him, but I, he sent me an email with a link, and I can share that if we figure out what's going on with my computer.
Just while we're waiting, Wayne, I mean, this is just my opinion, but I think that I would trust you, maybe the mayor, I don't know, a couple of people just look at it and pick whichever color is closest to what the bricks are now.
I think it's gonna be closer in color with two-
Probably, but I, you know, I don't know.
Just from my art knowledge.
Probably, that's what I was thinking too, but.
Can I share that or not?
The mayor's got something he's gonna be able to share here.
If I unshare it, it should be able to-
I look down, I'm like, where is that?
Down there now?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there you are.
I see you. True.
That'd be something.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, and I should be able to- Is it in your browser?
Yeah.
So click that one.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, the first one is a real good shot, wait till it gets back around.
There we go.
Oh, wow.
That's a darker one.
Yeah.
That's probably the color we want.
Yeah, I think the darker will really hold up better, I mean, will look nicer.
Now, that's a different pattern where-
Yeah.
-you know, whether or not we need that.
Yeah, it's serpentine.
We'd probably want the same, similar what we, what we had when the bricks were there, but that color looks like it's probably close to what the bricks looked like.
I just got, Jeff just sent this afternoon, signed, sent it out to everybody after the meeting. It'll have, that's a little darker.
Yeah, I like that a lot, I think that looks-
And more regular pattern.
Yeah, I like that pattern better. That color looks good. Oh, the dark one.
That's a light one, I'm not crazy about that one. So there'll be some options, and like I say, I'll send this to you when, now, to get back out.
Wayne, do you know if they have samples? In other words, like, maybe they-
They, they do.
Okay.
Jeff just wasn't able to get any of his contractors to provide it.
Okay.
Everybody, and trust me, I've been talking to concrete guys this past week for another project, and everybody is extremely busy right now.
Swamped, yeah.
So I'm sure when Jeff gives us, you know, gets samples, he'll bring them here, 'cause it, like he said, everybody, you can look at this, but it's, it'd be better to look at something in, in your hands and in front of you.
But we, we have a little time before we have to decide on the color too, isn't that correct? As long as we decide whether we want concrete or-
By the council meeting, the, the reason for the concrete versus the brick is the brick needed extra base.
Yeah.
So now, now they know at least this is how much base backfill they can put in.
So we could make a motion that we want the stamped concrete and we'll decide on the color?
I would.
Is that good enough, like that?
I'd say so, and if Jeff needs something more than that, we'll, we'll be in touch with everybody.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion.
For?
The stamped concrete.
I'll second it.
For one or two, or don't matter at this time?
Yeah, I don't know that we can decide, yeah.
Just a stamp?
We'll decide that at the-
You second it?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second to go with stamped concrete around Dealmen Inn. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. All right. COVID-19 administrative leave, we discussed this at the council meeting, and, and since you guys had been talking about this long before I came back on board, I'll let you guys run with it.
Well, I liked what you said at the meeting when we talked about it, that, and I felt like this when I voted for the policy, that I like us to be an employee-friendly town-
Right.
-or hire employer.
Office.
Whatever, because we, we do have a small staff and they have a lot on their shoulders, and we wanna keep them, 'cause they're all very good, so I don't know what we needed to do, I don't remember, and you were gonna do a little research.
Would it be applied back?
Retroactive.
You were gonna look at it. There's, it, it's silent, the only thing that's in there that I think could give perhaps an inference on that is here at number five, under certain circumstances, blah, blah, if you've done all these things, an employee is eligible for up to 10 days per fiscal year or calendar year with approval of town manager, that's the absolute only thing that potentially-
Gives a little wiggle room.
Gives a little wiggle room to say, well, here, here, in this calendar year, you had that one episode.
Right.
And you may not, you may not have wanted to use this time in case you had another episode or your mama had to be quarantined or whatever.
You're being me or whatever, yeah.
But there's, there's nothing in the adopted resolution, one way or the other, on prospective, retroactive.
And to my understanding, it was just one employee for five days, does that sound right?
I think that's about right, but, you know, that would, Gary had all-
That's correct.
Thank you.
Like the guy in the clouds.
The voice of the turtle.
So what do we need to do?
Well, make a motion to approve the-
The request by Gary?
Yeah, for the-
Yeah, that would, that would suffice, I think, or to, you know-
Or you basically would get their five days back.
I know he took more than five days.
What's that?
I know he took more than five days, he took almost 15, I believe, for that COVID stretch, so it would only be 10. I don't know about that.
So the motion would be to let him use retroactive, retroactively?
Yeah, if we're not sure exactly the number that's being asked for-
Whenever's allowed.
The smart thing might be just to, to direct Gary that if that is your sense to apply it retroactively, that it could be applied retroactively, so long as the rest of the conditions of the policy were met.
So it's just a matter of sharing that thought with Gary?
Personally, I think so, but y'all like to move and second, so you could do that too.
Want me just?
I don't, I don't wanna move and second if we don't have to.
I don't think you have to, I think you could-
You're the lawyer, if they say.
I'll talk to Gary when he comes back.
Discuss and, and direct.
I'll talk to Gary when he comes back.
Yeah, go.
Everybody in agreement?
That's assuming he hasn't fallen completely in love with the old sod, and he actually comes back.
Stays in Ireland.
And yes, I do, do feel that I have always tried to make this a, a friendly work environment and a healthy work environment. And, you know, it's not going to break the bank or anything. So I agree with that, so, all right? All right, Lehi Cement Company Carbon Safe Program, did everybody get my email on that? Does everybody understand that? They're trying to be carbon neutral. I can't remember what year, but they have been the leader in, in reducing mercury and carbon over the years. I think it's probably one of, don't quote me, but one of the most yeah, friendly to the environment, environment-friendly with what they do up there. So they are applying for a grant to, let's see, I'll just read here. They are trying to build a carbon storage assurance facility enterprise, carbon safe phase two storage complex feasibility grant. Some numbers there from the Office of Fossil Energy and Carbon Management. Lehi Hansen is working to establish the feasibility of commercial-scale carbon storage as an industrial partner to Patel Memorial Institute, submitting a proposal under the Carbon Safe Program. The request that grant will assist Lehi Hansen and Patel in drilling a test well to characterize the suitability of the subsurface geology at the Union Bridge, Maryland plant for potential carbon storage. Basically putting it back into the ground. So if everybody's okay, I'll write a letter of support on that.
Can I ask you a question just because I'm nosy? Do we know if this carbon is generated just by Lehi? Or will they, and I know nothing about this industry, will they be sort of a carbon recipient from other industries? Or is just this for their own carbon? Does that make sense?
I'm going to say probably for their own.
I just was, I just was curious. I don't know anything about how that would work. I may have to go look it up.
Likely it all sets, so like they pump out so many tons a year.
Right. Oh, yeah, they can, they can rebury it.
And get those credits.
Yeah.
You know?
I just didn't know if trucks full of carbon. Carbon trucks heading to Union Bridge.
I don't think so.
With footprints, all those little carbons.
But ever, is everybody all right if I write a letter?
I just have one question. Does, will that have any impact on the farmland or anything? Adding that carbon back into the ground?
It's, it's in.
That's where it came from.
It's within their, within their site already, so it's not, it won't, it won't leach out.
And they are so heavily regulated and watched and monitored that if it was harmful to anything, they wouldn't be able to do it.
It's worse in the air. The carbon's worse in the air than in the ground, so.
That's fine with me. Just need us to all not argue with you and then.
All right, thank you. And I hear a motion to go to closed session for general provisions of Article 3-305B7. Legal advice?
I'll second.
We have a motion second to go to closed session for the reasons just explained. All those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, we are now in closed session.